Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on local gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments. Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
This is a continuation of Wednesday's meeting. We did not adjourn. Wednesday is a continuation. We have all five commissioners present, so we're continuing Wednesday's meeting. And we're going to do away with the invocation and pledge because we've already done that. We did that Wednesday during that meeting. We have a -- and you can tell I'm down to business. No jacket, no tie. This is a work session. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make one comment here. The chairman has decided we are already prayed up, so...
Now, I said we -- Steve asked me that, and I said, "We need all the prayer we can get our hands on." I'm hoping God is continually with us. I'm going to make a statement because I was not able to enter the conversation Wednesday, and I will apologize in any sense, but hopefully I have that right.
Is that a three-minute invitation?
It is not a three-minute invitation. Okay. Mr. Hook did give to us the billing of the month of October of last year. It started that billing cycle, which started October. What he gave me was what they paid during the month of October, but the billing bills themselves, and he gave me invoices, gave us all invoices, each and every one of us got this, began on August the 4th. And the last payment still made in October was September -- excuse me, October the 9th. That's a billing period of 66 days. So it cannot equate to a 30-day billing period of what the power bills would have in -- we're looking at utility bills. I did not add up all of the water bills and all the others, but in a -- for a period of 60 billing days, 66 actually, if you go equate from October 4 through, excuse me, September -- well, August 4 through September, October the 9th, that's 66 days. 66 days, you had some bills that were paid at the beginning of the month for a unit, and bills that were paid again in the same month. So I think the numbers were helpful, but I will not base my vote today or Monday upon those numbers because they don't equate to 30 days worth of billing. I'm also -- I've also pulled the North Carolina Public Schools statistical profile, and the 23-24 is not out yet because 24 is not completed yet. But for the 23-20 -- 22-23, I'm looking at administrative -- official administrative managers, which I would assume would be at central office. Total of 33, all of those, nine are state-funded, one is federally funded, 23 are locally funded for the total of 33. Come down to principals, 35 are state-funded and one is local-funded for the total of 36. Assistant principals, you had 32 state-funded, zero federal-funded, and 20 local-funding for assistant principals, a total of 52. That's a grand total of 121 positions. And I'm just reading it straight off. I'm not trying to add to this or subtract or anything else, just looking at the numbers. If you look at elementary teachers, state-paid 972 positions, federal 88, and local funds 17 for a total of 1,077. Secondary teachers, 417 state, 16 fed, 5 local, for a total of 438. And then other teachers, and I assume those are positions that are partially state-funded, partially other. I know my wife, when she was teaching, for example, had an IT position and all kinds of things, was a certified teacher at a master's level. But anyway, state-funded 28, federal funds 11, and local funds 2, total of 39. Goddesses, you had zero local, 56 positions, state or federal. Psychology, 10, and they're all state-funded, zero local. You go down to librarian, they were 30 state-funded, and according to Public Schools statistical profile, zero fed and zero local. Consultants, supervisors, zero across the board. Other professionals, state-funded 138, eight federal, 12 local, total of 158. For a total of all of those, 254 positions. Teacher assistants, 262 state, 39 fed, 16 local, total of 317. Technicians, zero state, zero local, excuse me, fed, 16 local only. Clerical, 120 state, two fed, 18 local, total of 115. You had service workers, 33 state, 82 local, total of 115. Skilled craft was amazing. 10 state, zero fed, and 22, a total of 32, 22 local. And then laborers unskilled, zero across the board. So I guess everyone hired by ABSS is a skilled worker. These numbers are quite telling. If we, the county, and Ms. York read out what is required, statutory requirements for local funding, yet we have to provide funding for capital expenses. The teacher supplements and a number of things that we pay every single year and happily pay are not required by the county. Basically, I have a mountain of information here. I don't plan to go through it. Ms. Senator Gailey called me just as I was leaving the house for this meeting, and she and I were basically surprised at Dr. Harrison's statement to at least Channel 12 News in which he said, "Yes, we got the letters," I'm coming close to a quote, if not an exact quote, "Yes, we got the letter on the investigation. Nothing turned up new," and I'm paraphrasing there, "and so therefore, the investigation was a large waste of taxpayer money."
Correct.
I find that, and so did Senator Gailey, absolutely astounding. The letter itself from GovOps states, among other things, that school board members for their state violations, North Carolina General State statute violations and/or procedural violations, the school board members personally may have personal liability. If I was a school board member, I would be shaking in my boots and checking my insurance profile and everything else. That's not out of the ordinary. I just find that absolutely incredible. And so did Senator Gailey. I'm not trying to quote her, but we both were shocked to go on regional television and say, "Gee, golly, nothing's wrong." We have a lot that's wrong, guys. We have a lot that's wrong. We need to fix it, and we cannot fix it with commissioners or anybody else just going into La La Land or into Candy Land or any other land that you choose and giving everybody everything that they want. We've got to rein in the -- I have numerous taxpayers that have called me and are stating, "Gee, I'm retired. I don't have a retirement system. I'm living on Social Security, and it looks like I'm going to have to sell my house to pay the taxes. And I'm choosing between food and medicine and absolute necessities to make it day-to-day." We, five commissioners, have an absolute obligation to not only the schools, the students, the parents, teachers, everybody, but also to the taxpayers. And we cannot open the fantasy doors and give everybody everything they want. Ms. York, you gave us a wonderful projected budget. I think we need to look at that, and what we stated for our work sessions was that we want -- we're going to tweak your budget, not recreate it, not go into a fantasy land, not go into a wish list. We need to tweak your suggested budget. And I am praying and begging the four other county commissioners to look at that carefully. We cannot continue to take advantage of taxpayers or anybody else. We've got to be straightforward, and we cannot open the doors to a fantasy wish list. Through my opening statement, apologize in advance. Dr. Harrison, don't mean to step on toes, and no, we're not ready for you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I might like to add something to what you said, some information I gleaned while looking online this past week overnight. I looked at the Public School Foundation website and just looked at -- looked through the whole schedule of counties and looked at the -- there were six school systems out of 100 that had similar student populations. They call that an ADM, average daily member, of similar student populations to what Alamance County has. I used a range of 19,326 to 22,967. We're at 21,832, so that's above us and below us. Of those six schools, we ranked the highest -- now, this is in 21-22. There wasn't any more current information available there. It didn't appear. We ranked 61st, which is not above the middle of the pack, but is the highest of the six districts in a total appropriation from the county to the schools at $48.9 million. The only county that was higher, we ranked highest from the perspective of daily membership or student population. Our dollar allocation per student, that was 2240, 2,240. The numbers ranged from about 1,854 per student up to our high of 2240. Now, the highest county contribution was $51,246 from Pitt County. They had a higher -- they had the highest student population, so their per-student allocation was lower than ours. But we, of those six districts, I'm just pointing out, for those people who've been naysayers and say that Alamance County has not taken care of its schools, we've offered -- well, we provided what was asked, and in this particular situation, among our peers, we were the highest. So we've been trying to do the job, and we're trying to do the job now. And similar to what you've said, I've had a number of people comment to me. I was in a meeting this morning. I had people, numerous people come up to me and ask me what was going to happen. People do not want us to trash the schools, number one, but they want the schools to be responsible to the citizens for the use of funds. And I think we all recognize, and I think current administration at the school system recognizes, that historically, in particular in the last couple of years, they have not been appropriate stewards of the funding that was provided. Monies have not been spent that was provided on what it was off, what was provided for. We've said that over and over again. We've disclosed that. We had millions of dollars sitting idly while roofs were not being repaired that we had given them. We've done our job on our end. ABSS has got to step up to the plate, clean up its act, and get themselves on board for providing a consummate school system for the citizens of Alamance County. We've got to clean up the problem with the school performance. That has -- that's a got to do. And I think Dr. Harrison realizes that, and I anticipate that our new superintendent will realize that. We've done a tremendous job as a county, not looking at the commissioners individually, but as citizens of Alamance County, trying to take care of our schools. The job now. And I had a conversation earlier today with that -- over that same material with Dr. Harrison, and talked to him about the issue of competence in the ability of ABSS finance to manage the funds. And he pointed out a situation which I've asked Attorney Stevens, our county attorney to look into, to -- he said that I believe -- correct me if I'm incorrect. I believe you said it was Wake -- not Wake, excuse me, Forsyth, Winston-Salem-Forsyth School System was -- had a contractual arrangement with their...
They operated without a fund balance.
Operated without...
A number of years. I don't know whether or not that's still the case. I don't think it is. And Don Martin, who's now county commissioner up there or superintendent, they did not have a fund balance.
But they, anything that was left over, they returned to the county?
It's my assumption because they never had a fund balance. And the contractual thing came, you didn't mention here to check with your attorney to see if that was legal.
Right.
And then I said, "Possibly our attorneys can work together and do something that would be contractual." And the context of that, you...
Right. I'm just saying that that, until, until I think our competence level is raised, that would be an appropriate direction to try and take, to make sure that the funds that we provide are being spent as they're being requested and that the citizens of the county are getting value for what they provide to ABSS.
Commissioner Carter, we spoke about that on the phone shortly before this meeting, and like I've said in the past, a bit of a hyperbole, all things are possible through contract. I'm happy to look at it. It could be a possibility, it very well might be, but it's not anything I have any experience with, and we can certainly look at doing it if that's what the board wants.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Carter, I'm not quite sure I understand. You're contracting for what?
The way I understood it, and this was a conversation I had with Dr. Harrison, the funds that were, if there were funds left over in the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Fund, a fund balance that would be returned to the county?
I don't know how that got there, but they had no fund balance. And can I get more, so people can hear me better?
Well, state law says basically that funds that are not expended by the school system at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, are returned to the state. The law is totally opposite of that for counties. We give you a sum of money effectively, and say on July 1, and then monies not expended for the purpose intended are not returned to the county. So it's an entirely upside-down situation or opposite situation, state versus county.
Mr. Chair is correct. I think that's exactly what they're intending to try to change contractually, is that state law obligation not to return that money, that they would say, "All right, well, the state doesn't require us to do it, but we have a contract with the county that requires us to return those funds." And again, theoretically, it seems like it might be something that's possible. I will tell you that from what I'm looking at right now, Forsyth County does have a fund balance that they carry. So at some point in the past, they've decided to go away from that model for reasons that I don't yet understand. But again, this is a conversation that Mr. Carter and I had 30 minutes ago or less.
Yeah, but the point is, today, today's policy, if we give it to them effectively July 1, we do not get any monies returned, unlike with capital. With the $5 million for selling highs for a $5 million sitting in our account for Graham High School, we kept that, did not write checks because they had not entered into any contracts since 2022 when those funds were available. And we don't control that, except we do control the spending. I co-signed, checked the large checks along with our financial director for all those checks. I know when they go through, but if they don't enter contracts on those capital projects, i.e., for example, hypothetically, those two roofs, then the roofs aren't repaired, but the money is there, sitting, waiting, unlike other funds, supplemental -- supplements for teachers, for example, and so forth. And I think we need to go back. Mr. Lashley, Wednesday, you talked about reducing teacher supplements. I'm not in favor of that, but I am in favor of looking at those unfilled positions and not funding those unfilled positions because we're giving them money, which turns into, in my estimation, a slush fund, and they spend it, and we don't get it back. So I do not want to fund those unfilled positions. And we heard a number of different numbers. Dr. Harrison, I think you said at one time nine or 11 or something, and then that was corrected to maybe as many as 200. But that involved coaches and all kinds of other positions that don't necessarily receive school supplements. So I think neither number is on the news. Be nice to know what those numbers are, but we can go back to 23-24 numbers and 22-23 numbers and figure out the ones that were not, the positions that were not filled. And I think those are the monies that we should not be giving to the school system, the supplement, supplementary monies, additional, because if they're not filled, that money stays in the ABSS coffers.
A potential suggestion that may address these concerns, I don't know. If the primary concern is the number of utility, for utilities, which is right now estimated at $2.55, I think, million dollars. And I get that that's an uncertain number because the school system's never intended to use its HVAC in the way that it would next year in order to prevent further mold issues. And there's a new high school. And there are dehumidifiers. So if that number is uncertain, I think it's the best number we have. Take that number, allocate it to the county, to a special line item, and then let the school system come to us if they need it, which they inevitably will need some of it. That way, it's budgeted, it's held for them, and they can access it. But they also should manage their utilities properly and minimize the need for it. That way, it's not a contracting back and forth. It's just, "Here's the money. Come get it if you need it," which might satisfy all those concerns.
If you look at the utility bills, and Mr. Hook, I have a lot of respect for that gentleman, told us this is the highest month that we have, which is why I gave you the bills, the invoices for that month, because I don't want to be underfunded, was his statement, and that's a paraphrase. So he gave us the highest month, and it was really high, but it was also not for a 30-day time period of billing, but for a 66-day time period of billing. So I don't think we can use those numbers as accurate numbers. I think we have to follow Ms. York's position, go from what we had prior to the late submitted budget, and just look at it as we go. But I cannot trust a 66-day billing period and take that as the quote "high" and then times that by 12. Just, I don't feel comfortable at all doing that.
Well, if you take that and annualize it, divide it by 66, and then multiply it by 365, you get a more accurate annual number. Let's take the 573.
Commissioners, we are prepared to walk through...
Roughly $3.2 million.
Both the county workforce adjustment discussion and ABSS funding discussion based on what we heard at your last work session. Would you allow us to walk us through that and try to guide some decision-making here so that we can get ourselves closer to an adopted budget position?
We welcome that. Thank you.
Are we ready to go that route?
We're ready.
Okay.
So we will walk through a PowerPoint to try to help organize and reflect what we have heard from you all in terms of what your priorities were and what adjustments are penciled in and on the table for discussion at this point. Rebecca, will you go ahead and start us there?
So we wanted to provide a reminder of those priorities that you set during your board retreat this year and that we mentioned again at the recommended budget, that you asked us to focus on conservative revenue and expenditure management, supporting the county workforce, addressing community needs, and prioritizing capital and facility needs. And the adjustments that you have recommended so far do fall in line with those priorities, and so I think we are well on track. We did want to bring to your attention the list of positions not recommended that's located in your budget book. On page 85 in the county attorney section, the recommended position count inaccurately showed five positions. The assistant county attorney position that was requested was not recommended, and so that number should have been four positions or four FTEs. So you can see by the slide here that it was shown on the list of positions that were not recommended, but all of the other pages in the budget book are accurate. But we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that error.
The peer support specialist for, that was talked about, because that goes with recovery court, pre-trial.
Yes.
All that.
That is recommended. That is out of opioid settlement funds.
Okay, thank you.
This is on page 72 of your budget book. If you are having a hard time seeing that, like me.
Quick question on that. The assistant county attorney position, public information officer position have net county costs is zero. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We were reallocating savings within the budget to fund those positions.
So if we fund those positions, I mean, how would that, would that impact where we are now with our, with the budget request?
No. For the county attorney position, there was an offset in the contracted legal services, so we reduced that, and that made that position not require additional funding. We had that set aside in the contracted services. And the public information officer position, I was reallocating a vacant position we were cutting from tax and appraisal services. So it was a wash in terms of new funding for that. That position is still cut, and we still have a cut of contracted services.
Say that again. That position is still cut. Which one?
The appraisal, the appraiser position in tax.
All right. So moving along, just as a reminder where we are in terms of proposed adjustments to the recommended budget on the Alamance County government side. At this point, we have heard recommendations from staff to reduce the economic development budget by $30,000 due to a grant that is expiring, a net zero change to the library department due to additional funds and a grant that was awarded. And then we also heard, again, a net zero change where we would use sign-on bonuses for hard-to-fill positions by reallocating funding from lapsed salary in the sheriff's department, EMS, and DSS for a total of $50,000 for each department.
Can I just offer a clarification? The hard-to... The hard-to-fill positions are consistent with the market study that you all did, so it should actually be reflecting detention officers. I needed some clarification if the board wanted to expand that to do all sheriff positions, which was, would not be consistent with the hard-to-fill vacancy positions that were studied in the market study. So in the case of DSS, we were narrowing that just to social workers. For EMS, we were narrowing that just to paramedics. And then for the sheriff, we would want to narrow that to be consistent for just to detention, although that was not the proposal that you heard. So I did want some clarification if this moves forward on exactly who you wanted covered with this idea.
I think the sheriff's been pretty clear that we're, that the, we're cut to the bone right now on patrol deputies, too, our shifts are thin. If we're cut from twelve to thirteen, down to five or six, I can't even imagine being, I've told, I've told some of the other commissioners, I can't imagine being at one end of the county and my backup being at the other end of the county, forty-five minutes or more away in a situation where you don't have local law enforcement typically going to back up sheriff's deputies out in the county. So I, I think that's, those are positions that are critical for us to get, we don't want to go any lower, and we definitely need to get them back in line.
I just wanted to offer the reminder that the market study phase two will include the sheriff positions outside of detention.
Let me also add, we did phase one of the study. We increased detention officer salaries to comply with the market. They are at or above market study currently.
That is correct.
And Sheriff Johnson is really good about sending exit letters or information to us, and almost never is it financial. They're leaving because of family concerns, because of safety issues, all kinds of other issues, talk within the, various reasons, but almost never is it over the money. And the same thing I'm hearing from teachers, they're not leaving ABSS. They tell me because of the money, they're leaving because they're not, they think backed up by principals, assistant principals, or the administration. Now, a lot of that has changed, and I look forward to much less negative comments in the future, because many of the principals have been changed and moved, and the strong principals have now, Smith to Turntime is a good example. That principal, very, very strong, and now hopefully will turn a failing middle school into a non-failing middle school. That's going to take time to see. And that principal at Smith had a very, very strong reputation of backing faculty, meeting with parents when necessary, straightening behavioral issues out, but that's not the case across the board. And so I'm hoping that Dr. Harrison in the short term, and the new superintendent in the long term, can turn that around so that we don't have seventeen failing schools, and we have hopefully zero failing schools. But that's going to take an administration that's tough. You can't just, everybody pat on the back and giggle. It's going to require some occasionally maybe replacements, new personnel, who knows? Thank goodness, that's your job, not mine.
So we have now
Wait just a minute, just a minute. Okay, I just want to comment on the sheriff stuff, not the sheriffs, but law enforcement, before I forget it. Sorry, John. I've been on this commission board, this is my third year, kind of four, however you look at it, how you get elected, and every year we hear the same story about we're short, we're short. We hear it with DSS, we're short. We hear it with all of them, we're short. These are jobs that have turnovers. They just do, every job has a turnover. There's, there's no blame, it's just reality. And every, we have done raises, we have done bonuses, and we still have these same problems. That tells me it's not a money issue. It may be something else, what I said the other day to Jackie Fortner, that is something we have got to look at. And, and just one more thing, if we're going to talk about each subject in between, let's don't go after the school system after everything we talk about. We started out with our opening statement talking about the school system, then we went to sheriff, and then we went right back to putting the school system down, and I'm bringing the sheriff back in. We, we cannot do this as leaders, is personally have our own personal issues to attack whatever agency in this county. There is nobody perfect. You were talking about Craig Turner's wife, Julie, she is amazing, but there are other Julies in ABSS that are amazing, and you can ask Julie that, and she will tell you that. I don't know how you know all this unless you're walking the halls of school, and I know you hear things just like all five of us do, but there are more good than bad. That's true in everything. There are bad this and good this, no matter what uniform or what outfit you wear. But we, we can't, we can't do the same thing every year to where we're going to do this, and I'm already hearing it. And it gets us nowhere, except everybody gets mad. I don't know if you've read social media, people are livid. There, there's, there's a caricature on Facebook right now because of a comment that was made, and that's, that's more distraction, that pulls us away from the issues that we really need to work on solving. And, and it's almost like we, if we go over here, we can talk about this and not talk about what we need to talk about. And the sheriff come in here, ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus. Wake County has five, or seventy-five hundred, I don't have it pulled up right here, but they have a billion dollar or more so budget. They put in hundreds of millions in their school system. We just can't, Wake has a seventy-five hundred dollar thing, Forsyth County has a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus, Durham County has a six thousand, Charlotte Mecklenburg seventy-five hundred, and we are doing a ten thousand. And these people, like two point eight billion, five eighty-one million, nine sixty-six, little old Durham, million, Charlotte Mecklenburg, two point three six. We're going to have to have reality here, because we just, because we love our sheriff, and I do, I highly respect him and all the men and women that work with him, but we absolutely cannot every time somebody walks in the door, whatever you want, we got you. Because we got to really, if we're going to do budgets, and we're going to look at who gets what and is fair, we have to look at everybody. And I mean, it, John, it's really hard for me to sit here and, and, and just hear this, because I don't think it's fair. I understand where you feel, and I respect that, and you got good reasons. You know, I just don't want us to go down this hole again. We do this every year. I've watched this for eight years as a school board member. We, we got to be better than this, because we got real big problems, real big problems. And we also have kids and teachers that need us to make sure that we help solve those problems. That's the future. And forgive me for being short with you, I don't mean to be short with you, but it is, it's just so difficult. It, it's just difficult. I think we're better than this. I know we are, I know we are, so I'm sorry, I'm just really sorry.
Ms. Thompson, I'm in total agreement with you. I'm saying bonuses have, we tried
I don't like bonuses.
Yeah, I, I'm in total agreement. There was a forty-one vote, we voted for bonuses for social services, I was the negative vote, and I said then, bonuses do not work.
They just flag
They took the bonus and left Alamance County. We see the same thing, Dr. Butler, the podium was there in those days instead of here, who said that eighteen million, nine hundred and some thousand dollars, just under nineteen million, did not help retention. Those were his words, did not keep teachers in the school system, nineteen million dollars. Bonuses do not work, and I'm in total agreement with Ms. Thompson. I do not like the idea of paying these large bonuses. If you ever even considered it, I would only vote for such nonsense unless it was tied to a contract that required to a minimum of a two-year commitment. And we do not have such a, the ability today to do that. I guess we could do that, but
I thought we did, I had a conversation with Mr. Stevens, and I thought we did have the ability to put
Staff would need the time.
We have the ability, but we don't have that in place.
We don't have it in place, right, we don't have
Bill had mentioned seed, seed money, is that the right word? What's the right word? Hundred and some thousand, seed money, starting to start that, so I remember that.
No, it's only for ten people, though.
Yeah, right.
So to address the issue of contracts to repay bonuses, realistically, we can have a contract in place that requires them to repay the bonus. Practically, what that amounts to is an agreement by the employee to forego any vacation time accrued and forego their last paycheck if they leave during that period of time, and then it could give us the right to sue the employee to try to recover the difference between what they had allowed us to keep and what they owe. My historical interaction with that process is that there's not usually a lot of liquid finances to go after in those situations, and very few people just repay that bonus voluntarily. So having a contract in place doesn't mean that we're guaranteed to get that money back. I just want to make sure the board's aware of that.
May I make a recommendation? At this point, what we're recommending has zero impact on the recommended budget or the subsequent adopted budget. We could certainly come back as a board, since this is a policy decision rather than a budget decision, and really think through, especially in light of our market and compensation study, how do we do this practically, methodically, while meeting the needs of each of the commissioners, and also the needs of the departments for those hard-to-fill positions? So is that something you would accept, that we kind of put that piece of it aside for now and walk through those that have budget implications today?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I actually have a suggestion that does have a budget impact.
Okay.
Potential budget, actually, not a revenue, I mean, an impact on the allocations of dollars, not adding more dollars.
Okay.
And it will put this to bed, at least for today, I think. And that is this, I've been talking about these hard-to-fill positions for a long time, so has the rest of this board. We, we indicated that at our Monday meeting, the sheriff's department came back and made a recommendation for personal bonuses. I know there, there are subsequent conversations with DSS director, who has said that sign-on bonuses for the hard-to-fill social workers are a good idea, too. We, this board considered that some time ago and rejected that, but I know there, there were some conversations with the, the director of EMS, and there was a different proposal for EMS that does not involve sign-on bonuses, but rather salary, request for salary increases for the hard-to-fill paramedics position. I asked staff to look into that based upon the number, if there was a two thousand dollar increase to their salary, that it would include their FICA benefits and everything, with a number of paramedics that we have, it would be a, a cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. On the board is thirty thousand dollars that, that we have in the budget that's unused, subtracting that's two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A way to pay for that would be, instead of giving a three percent COLA to every individual in the county, it would be a two point seven five percent COLA to everybody in the county, which would pay for the two thousand dollar increases to EMS. So in order to give everybody what they've requested, or close to it, I want to make a motion, it'll pass or it won't, and then we can move on. And that is that we, for the sheriff's department, both for patrol and for detention, that we have a four thousand dollar sign-on bonus at the beginning, a four, a four thousand dollar sign-on bonus a year in, that we have the same for DSS social workers who are hard to fill, and that for EMS, we have a two thousand dollar increase in this budget to their salary, and that there would be a corresponding shift in the COLA, which would be two point seven five percent for everyone else. That is the motion, I say we vote for it, and then move on.
All right.
Here, here in no second, at this point, let's move on.
Very well.
Oh, I was ready to second, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I just got some questions about what
Say one.
Uh, just the numbers, I didn't write them down fast enough. You said you wanted four K for the sheriff patrol?
Four and four.
Four and four.
Four at the beginning, four at the end.
And four for the DSS social services, I didn't
Social workers.
Social workers, sorry. I think there are eleven or twelve positions who are there on and that was, that, that number was what from you?
One four.
And we tried that with social services two years ago, and it fell flat. It did not increase a single person.
I think there was one, I think there was one person.
They left, if I remember correctly. So why are we repeating a previous figure?
Because we have holes that we cannot fill for a number of years, and these are the requests of the department has on the way to fill it. I have pushed DSS a number of times to go in a different direction, they have resisted, and this is their request. I say we give it nine months, which would give us time to, to see if it works before our next, the next round of, of budget talks for next year. If it doesn't work, it's scrapped. If it works, great. If it does work for the sheriff and DSS, it's paid at a lapped salary, there's no budget impact, and it gives all of those departments what they've asked for to help the hard-to-fill positions. That's fine.
The only, and my second was, I was going to make a, a request that you amend that your motion to include a contract for recoup
I would not include a contract for recruitment, I think it makes it more difficult, and I think we're never going to sue somebody for three thousand dollars when they leave and, and want their, their pay.
That's not a great incentive. We'll sue your bud if it don't work out. I would, uh-uh.
Yeah, Mr. Carter, are you doing a second with his current motion with no contracts?
I'll second it with no contract.
Any other discussion other than my, we've tried this before, it fell flatly on its face, it cost us a ton of money, it, bonuses do, without contracts particularly, do not work. Now, all in favor
Wait, 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 Craig, can I, I'm sorry, John, can I ask you, you're talking about two point seven, and from the three, do these folks already have the three? Is this countywide, what you're talking about?
Well, they will not, they don't have the three until we vote for the three.
But I mean
The three is proposed for every county employee. I think the motion is to reduce it to two point seven five for every county employee.
So we've already cited on having three for every county employee?
That was the, what I had recommended, that's all.
Right, okay.
It would, it would take that down.
Okay, and that would, these people that were talking, that are short, that are consistently short, would have three?
No.
No?
That's not what I understood.
They'd have two point seven five plus two thousand dollars.
Just the paramedics.
You're talking about reducing some county, current county employees to benefit these sign
Who are the some? You're reducing some?
Your, every single county employee would go to a two point seven five percent COLA versus the proposed three percent in order to fund increases for paramedics at two thousand dollars on top of their pay.
So Ms. Thompson, as I understand it, that's a decrease for every current county employee?
Let me just be clear that this is not what the department's actually requested. I asked both the DSS director and the EMS director if they were given a choice between doing a sign-on bonus or a pay increase, which would they prefer in terms of effectiveness? And DSS said they wanted to pursue sign-on bonuses, they thought that would be a better recruitment tool, and EMS said that they would prefer a pay adjustment for paramedics and EMTs versus a sign-on bonus. It was his philosophy that those did not necessarily work in the past, sign-on bonuses. So that's where we've arrived at.
Did you, does the sheriff fall in there anywhere? The sheriff's department, did he mention that he would like the increase in salary or
I didn't solicit
No worries.
To, to the sheriff, no.
Because he was part of that salary study.
All of these departments were part of the salary study, yes, so they did receive adjustments in pay with the market study, that the rest of the workforce did not, right? The rest of the workforce was not benchmarked.
That's coming, though, eventually.
They'll be in either a phase two or three if they weren't included in phase
But these three that we're talking about are included in countywide three percent. That's salary.
Everybody is proposed to receive a three percent cost of living adjustment, but with Craig's motion, I'm sorry, Commissioner Turner's motion, it would be reduced to two point seven five for everybody in order to find the savings to pay for a two thousand dollar adjustment for one hundred paramedic positions.
Are there other questions?
What would be the impact if we eliminated the adjustment of a quarter percent to the COLA?
You would need to find two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to do a two thousand dollar pay increase for the paramedics.
But that's only for the paramedics?
Yes. The sign-on bonus is
It'd be overall.
I'm sorry?
Well, it'd be the overall number. What would be the overall number?
Um, for, to do what?
Sheriff's Department, uh, social services, EMS?
Yeah, the departments that we were looking at doing sign-on bonuses for, we were not planning to allocate any new funds. We would either trim back the vacancy rate to get them some seed money and then use lap salary for future. So it would not be a, a request for new funding for the sign-on bonus.
How much negative impact would it have?
Financially?
Financially.
The sign-on bonuses, we don't think would have an upfront cost. It just, your cost is each time you offer the sign-on bonus and then if, if it doesn't work as a retention tool, then you're, you know, out.
So it could be zero, but it could be a large number.
There will be a cost, yes, for the sign-on bonuses. I just don't know how many positions they'll be hiring over the course of the year. I think we heard from the sheriff that he was hoping to hire 10 in a year. So it's kind of an estimate.
The original plan.
Guestimate, not estimate.
Correct.
The original plan was for it to expire in regard to sunset at 80% of the vacancies.
Yeah, but that's not the motion.
No. I'm just telling you what the original plan was when you were here.
I did have some numbers on pay adjustments with overtime for detention officers, paramedics and social workers, if that's helpful. Um, you all have made some adjustments to those salaries. I have the data back from 2020. So a detention officer's back on January 1st, 2020 was making $35,789. They are now at a current starting salary rate of $53,898. Uh, they also get a $4,000 shift differential for that. For paramedics, in 2020, they were at a starting salary of $36,485. They are now at a starting salary of $47,528. And for social worker, um, one, or social worker IAT, they started in January 1, 2020 at $43,510 and they are now at $55,0014. So they've had COLA adjustments, special adjustments by the board, um, market study adjustments to help get those salaries up.
Can you just repeat the detention numbers, please?
Yeah, detention officers started on January 1st, 2020, the starting salary was $35,789. And to date, our current starting salary for, uh, Ju- uh, June 1st is $53,898.
And that's as of June 1st of this year?
Correct. It's about a 50.6% increase.
Do you have those percentages in front of you?
I do.
Can you just read, read them?
Sure, the total percentage from 2020 to 2024.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, detention officers at 50.6, five, zero, point six percent increase. Uh, paramedic, 30.3. And, um, social worker IAT is 26.4% increase.
If the numbers are obtained, our detention officers are paid, are some of the highest paid in this region. Is that correct?
They, um, the market study did not significantly adjust their sta- their salary because it was found that they were not below the market.
Thank you.
When will phase two be done? When, when can you expect to see those?
We would like to bring phase two, um, back to the board in November for a January 1 implementation date.
I, I, I'm sorry, Bill.
Are you finished?
I think the focus should be, if there is a focus, on EMS. They are the lowest and, um, I mean, they're all vital. You can't, I don't, it's like picking which kid you like in your family. And that can be any particular day. But, um, it's, we hear detention a lot, we hear DSS a lot because they're constantly in the fire. But EMS is in the fire, too. Um, they all are, anybody, first responder. Um, I, I don't, bonuses are, when you take taxes out and you got cost of inflation, it's, you won't even know you got it. Um, I would like to see us do something for EMS. And, um, and I'm not picking and choosing my favorites because they're all wonderful. But when I hear these numbers, um, that's just my opinion.
Ms. Thompson, just, just, uh, from what I understand, the bonuses would be grossed up to net the $5,000 or $4,000 or whatever it might be, so to speak.
That detention officer makes more than a teacher.
Call for the question, Mr. Chairman.
You know what I'm saying?
Would a teacher want to be in the detention center?
Well, I don't, would a detention officer want to be in the ninth grade?
Would you repeat your motion?
Call for the question, uh, the motion. The motion is, um, that we, um, add sign-on bonuses for, uh, Sheriff's Patrol and Detention and for EMS social workers.
DSS.
DSS, social workers. An amount of 4,000 sign-on and 4,000 one-year-after employment. And further that for, EMS paramedics, that we increase their salary by $2,000 with accompanying salary requirements associated with that increase, which totals $247,000 and that the, the EMS paramedics increase be offset by a corresponding $247,000 paid for by a reduction of the COLA currently valued in manager's budget at 3% to 2.75%.
Question has been called. It's Mr. Turner's motion, Mr. Carter's second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying no, no. Yeah, three noes, two yeses. Thank you.
My focus was EMS.
Continue, please.
All right. Uh, do we have consensus around the adjustment to economic development of decreasing by 30,000 for the expiration of that grant? That was a staff recommendation. Okay. Uh, and then I heard consensus also for the library adjustment, which did not have an impact on the total bottom line. So moving to the schools, we have a couple of alternatives that have been proposed in terms of additional funding to ABSS. The first alternative was a total of $3,480,000 and that was for $2,553,000 additional funding for utilities and $495,000 for roof and HVAC preventative maintenance contracts. The second alternative, which was not formally made at our last meeting, but we did discuss, was an increase of $6,830,790.
That was mentioned sort of at the last minute. I was asked to pencil that one in. So I wanted to capture that up here and make sure that everybody's points were.
That was for me. This is awkward. I did it. So it, it doesn't hurt to ask. I'd also like to say that, um, with the ball fields, because this is going to play in here, with the ball fields that's been reduced, which means lights is not fixing the ballpark, that I would like to see if it would be okay if we would take those two years of proposed amounts for those ball fields and put them towards something else. Uh, I would rather it be done the way it's supposed to be. If I have to do a campaign to get this funded through the public, I, I would rather do that because, um, this, this is a biggie for me. I really worked hard for this the other year. But I'm, it's a no-brainer to sacrifice this. This is to something because, um, it, I just want it to focus on the schools because they are in such dire straits. And I mean, I don't know how you rearrange money like that or if you even care for it. But I'm not going to fuss about having that. That's, can go to somewhere else to move that. We just, we just got to get this right and that's something that can wait. Because the effort Jordan be done and it'll be done and, and we'll just work on the other two if I have to do it privately. Um, I just want this, this maintenance with this school system or we're going to re right back where we always have been. And we just cannot do that because, um, we are right back at COVID and mold when it comes to being divided. And we cannot keep doing this because of our community. You know, I hear parents, we just cannot keep doing this. That's like I said, John, and all you guys. It is such a major distraction and that is so defeating and it takes all the focus off of the kids and the teachers. And if we don't have those two, we don't have a future. And, um, I just, that's just something I wanted just to mention about these ball fields. I texted Heidi and said, am I allowed to bring that up and mention it? And you can bring up anything. So that's kind of what I did.
You're proposing to take it out of the budget?
And put it toward, just move it.
Move it where?
Toward the schools, especially for that 495.
So you're going to want, you want to move 1.5 to the schools?
It wasn't 1.5.
So I was, was supposed.
I wish.
350,000.
They brought it down to 350.
It was 350 for two years, that's 700.
Yeah.
We're not allocating two years for it. This is a one-year budget.
And it's actually funded within the county's capital reserve, not the schools.
You need to help me on this. I just am willing to do anything to sacrifice to make our county on the same path and we work together because we are going to have to.
Yeah. So the funding for that project would go back into county capital reserve, which is a restricted capital?
Well, just write me a check.
I can't give you the money for the school current expense out of that.
350,000 is the number.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just trying to find a way.
Delete that project, we can do that. It's just not able to go to the school current expense budget.
Let me go back. I reviewed minutes from June of 2021 with Dr. Thorpe. And he assured us that he had quarterly maintenance projects for every HVAC system, that he had, uh, twice a year roof, individual roof inspections and on and on and on. And none of that happened. It was a fiction when it was said. We county commissioners did not know that it was a fiction, but we, COVID, we found out. Because, for example, again, turn time, um, when, uh, Mr. Bass came in with photographs, he had all kinds of materials in the HVAC systems, including paper, cups, you name it. It was inside and had never been inspected. And we were told at one point that gee, we are, have never replaced filters. Uh, I find that hard to believe, but I believe that, that they did that because their expert, their paid expert was telling us that. Um, so we again can give all kinds of monies to ABSS. But Ms. Graves's chair, Dr. Harrison as superintendent, it's up to you guys to make sure the roofs get repaired or the HVAC system filters get replaced. We don't have a say-so in that. We can fund it, but we cannot make you do your jobs. Um, so I am pleading and begging you to not do what's happened in the past.
Before we move on, I just want to make sure what we just voted on, when I voted no, did that give a $10,000 sign-on bonus to the sheriff?
No.
Or the other bonuses?
It takes it all away.
Okay, okay. That did not get a.
Three to two vote, it failed.
Okay. So is there interest in going with the 495,000 for roof and HVAC preventative maintenance contracts? That was part of your alternative one. So you, uh, two and a half million for utilities and then the preventative maintenance contracts.
Are you saying that if we don't do the utilities, um, what's, are their lights going to get cut off? I mean, this is, what's going to happen with this? Cause it's going to be high. I mean, we know that because of just inflation and Duke Power, their precious little cell and just everything else. And just with running stuff 24/7, they've never done that before. And you got a new high school, too, which is the size of Figur and Holly Hill Mall. So what happens with that?
The discussion.
The proposed budget change is the Pago money goes from 3.3 million to 3.9 million, $600,000 increase. Um, I feel like that's the increase that they need and if used reasonably. Um, I don't think we can use Mr. Hook's numbers as to a 66-day period of time and expect that to be time swell. Just, just not a realistic number. I think we've got to, um, despite what we now are receiving in the school system, pick hard numbers and live with it. And $600,000 with Pago money is a substantial increase.
Just let me clarify for a moment. The Pago funding is within the Davenport model for capital projects. The current expense request would include such things as funding for utilities and maintenance, a separate pot of money that's outside of the Pago, okay? So I just want to make sure we're clear about that. The way that the current expense funding works is that you're giving a lump sum allocation. It's either at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is what we did this year, or it's 1/12th paid monthly, depending on the preference of the boards. Um, you can say that you would fund two and a half million for utilities, but that is captured in the full current expense amount that would go to the schools to help support their operating needs.
And where's that money coming from?
That is coming from your general fund.
And what's that going to do to our overall general fund or percentage? You've gone from 20% down to what, 17?
Are you talking, I'm sorry, 3% down to 17?
We don't want to go beyond a.
Oh, the fund balance, I'm sorry. So fund balance would not be an appropriate source for current expense funding. This would require an increase on your tax rate. If you were to do alternative one, you're looking at a $3 million increase. That's a recurring expense year over year, uh, that goes to support operating needs.
So you're saying instead of going two pennies increase, go to four pennies increase if we adopt that?
A little bit more than three, not four.
Right, 3 million is a little more than one penny, right? One penny is two and a half million.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well.
But if you add the two.
$2,553 plus 495, that is a substantial increase. It's more than a penny.
Right, it's a $3 million increase if you do that portion with the proposed two cent increase that's already there.
Are you advising us or suggesting that we increase the taxes two pennies, your current suggestion, three or four? Are you revising your increased tax rate?
The manager's recommended budget doesn't change, right? That's already done. I've recommended a two-cent tax increase. There is not capacity in there to give any additional funding to the schools. If you'd like to add more funding to either current expense or elsewhere, then you would need to find a substantial cut to offset that or you would need to increase your tax rate to accommodate the amount that you wanted to increase.
Exactly what I wanted to hear.
I, I do have one question and that's just for the first, because I'm, I'm looking at both these numbers in combination.
That, I think we were just taking these one at a time. So the $3 million increase is that utility piece and the preventative maintenance contract.
No worries, thank you.
Yep.
That's about a 1.41 penny.
That's about right. Well, yeah, you have that.
So it's technically 1.2 cents for the 3.048.
Thank you.
I believe utilities and preventative maintenance are included in the 6.8, so they would be two separate alternatives as opposed to combining.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And, uh, Rick, if I can ask you a question here?
Of course.
Uh, and you're telling us that there's nothing that we can do to sort of like, um, hedge ourselves, so to speak, with the 2.55. I mean, there's no way that we can hold on to that and give it to the s- uh, school system piecemeal. You know, when they, when they get a bill, get an invoice and they give it back to us?
So the budget process is an annual process with the schools. We have a statutory obligation to fund their utilities. So what that means typically is that the money is allocated based on what they believe they're going to spend for utilities over the course of the year. That said, uh, the obligation is to pay for the utilities, not necessarily to advance the funds that they believe will be required to pay for the utilities if that number is higher than we believe that it otherwise should be. So I think it'd be unreasonable to say that we don't. So I think it'd be unreasonable to say that we don't have to fund anything, but I also think it would be reasonable to say that we don't have to fund whatever the expected amount might be based on what we believe be inflated amount. But at the end of the day, if the utilities are owed, and they're owed, and the county has that obligation to fund.
What is current amount in your proposed budget for utilities?
We don't break out current expense that way. So it's just a, a current expense amount that they received last year, and I can get you that number. I don't know if somebody else.
You haven't broken down just for utilities or is it overall?
No, we don't break.
We did not break it out.
We don't break current expense out that way at all. So current expense right now is proposed at 48,827,151. That same amount that you, that they had last year. Their current expense requested amount was 59,170,941, which was a 10.3 million dollar increase or a 21.2% increase.
Give me that number again, 48 million?
Forty-eight, eight twenty-seven, one fifty-one for current expense.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Current expense is issued on the monthly installments. Your current, your current expense allocation commissioners, um, the 48.8 million dollars, that is distributed to the school system on a 1/12th monthly basis. Um, your Pago capital, the 3.3 million, that's what was requested for us to advance last year. We worked with the school system. They received those funds, um, in September so that they had those for those projects. We have consulted with our legal department. And as long as that is still applicable, then we would pay them come July 1. We would advance those funds of whatever the capital allocation would be, whether that be a 3.3 or a 3.9 as recommended by county manager York.
One time. You wouldn't divide it by 12?
Not for the Pago. Because they're trying to do a, a lot of their summer projects while the schools are empty with the students out. And that provides them the cash flow that they need to fulfill those contracts and get those payments done before the students get back.
So I can add, correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, Ms. Evans, excuse me. 3.9 and 48.8, I can add those two numbers together, and that's the total. Okay? Thank you.
I'd also like to point out that that number does not include the pass-through fines and forfeitures that pass through the county and then are dispersed monthly to the school system.
And that next year is coming, projected to be a million dollars.
We wouldn't be sitting here if we had 27.2 million dollars that didn't go to mold, would we? It'd be a lot better, wouldn't it?
So the mold issue.
No, if there was no mold.
If there was no mold?
Mm-hmm.
Those funds were in capital.
Right.
So we would be addressing the additional issues with roofs, HVACs, any other capital need that the school system were to bring before the board.
But it would be there.
It would be there. Um, but those funds would not be able to be used for their operations.
Yeah.
So utility bills, teacher supplements, things of that nature.
It is a pretty big hit. God, I hope we never go through that with the county termites, you know, or something crazy. Never know.
So we have our two alternatives. Uh, so going back, do we have consensus for alternative one versus alternative two? Uh, we've also heard from Commissioner Thompson about reducing the ball field amounts from county capital by 350,000. That would not do anything to benefit current expense, but certainly could be another reduction.
Well, I just, I don't know. I'm just really desperate trying to figure out how to help my public school system. That's what I'm trying to do and every kid that walks in the doors.
You've given them 9.8 million dollars.
I don't care if I'm giving them 900 million, I think right now they need support.
So you're just going to continue to do the same thing that's been done in the past?
Well, you know, we added 19 million to our 150 million dollar bond, which is 169 million, which I discovered last weekend. So we have gone into more debt too. And every time we've talked about that bond, I swore I would never go over 150. And due to my ignorance when we voted April 5, 2021, and Craig was leader, which I always count on him, and I said, just sell the whole 150. That's what I thought I was doing, and that's why I voted against that the other week when John and I, unfortunately you weren't here. And we voted against that because I thought, I'm not voting for that premium, and that's my ignorance. So now I know that voters, you don't have 150 million dollar bond, you have 169 million dollar bond plus interest. So we all need to own everything we do.
But wouldn't you think that the 19 million dollars would help the school system out considerably?
Yes, I do, but my word is everything.
But you want to give them more than 19?
Right now, I want to help them, but I did not vote to go over 150.
But you did.
I didn't think I did. That's my problem.
You did not. You, you, you were correct. You voted no. I voted no, and it did not pass.
No, 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 that's not no, because I'm told, this is, we're getting off track here, but I didn't do what I thought I was doing because I just didn't, because I, I don't know. And, um, I didn't. And I'm told that we got 169 million dollar bond instead of 150. And that's, that's very concerning to me.
Well, I'm just getting back to the fact that what you're doing is you're going to give the school system 19 million dollars. So with your, with your goal of helping the school system, that would be a considerable help.
It is, it is. But the thing of it is, Bill.
But it's not enough?
No, that's not it. The money's not enough, not the issue. The money is not the issue to me. My word is, because every time we talked about this, I said, I will never go, I will not go over 150 because that's what our voter, you're a solid taxpayer representative too. And I said, I will not go with 150. And due to my ignorance, I did and didn't realize it. And when I found out last week, I talked to Susan, I talked to Heidi, and I talked to Rick. And, uh, because I screwed up. That's the way I feel, because my word is everything. Being honest is everything.
And you're being honest right now, but all I'm asking you to do is focus on something here. Your goal is to give the school system more money. And in this particular vote that you don't, you feel like you were not honest about, you, you were doing that. You're giving them 19 million dollars that they did not normally think they were going to have. So don't you believe that the 19 million dollars would actually help out the school system?
I do, Bill.
If you believe that the 19 million dollars would go to the proper things of the school system.
So I think that word proper is the whole issue here because of doubt and mistrust. And that's, that's what we're, we're just keep covering this thing all along, and we'll be real careful not to get in a rabbit hole. All I'm telling you, Pamela Thompson gave her word to not go over 150. And I did and didn't know it. And I'm ashamed of that. Because now my taxpayers have 169 plus ACC. And, and that isn't what I thought I did. And that's inexperience. I'm not, God, I'm not your stockbroker money. I've always counted on you for the numbers. And the rest of you guys too. But it doesn't matter because it's, it does matter, but it's done now. And I'm, you know, I can't change that, but my word is, is bigger than anything, and I've messed up. And I'll admit it.
But I'll get back to what I said before. You're going to give the schools 19 million dollars more than you even wanted to, but, but, but it happened. So don't you believe that since that happened, you're actually achieving one of the goals that you just said you had was to give the money to the school system? 19 million dollars can do a lot.
It can.
It can fix more problems. Because that 19 million dollar number was actually already in the accounts to take care of.
I think that's why Craig got angry with me, because I thought I'm voting against the whole thing, and I wasn't. Evidently, I was voting against the premium on the 19 million on this second bond thing, whatever. But the thing that matters to me is I swore I wouldn't, and I did, and I made a terrible mistake. And I found out last weekend. And, um, I'm just, you know.
Uh, Susan, uh, the Davenport model, does it achieve the revenues and expenses to not have to, uh, increase? The Davenport model, Davenport model is going to be, you can wait if you want.
It's okay. Um, so the Davenport model would, would have supported issuing 19.5 million dollars in par amount, so that would have been the principal debt, and accepting any premium that a bidder would have offered. Revenues were there. The board, when they took action, we issued bonds to where we would receive as close to 19.5 million dollars in cash because we still had to take care of the cost of issuance, which are equating to right around $400,000. So when we back that out, there will be roughly about 19.1 million dollars for projects. And I would like to just make the board aware, when the voters approved for the bonds, it was to issue debt in the amount of 150 million dollars for ABSS. At this point in time, we have issued 148,630,000 dollars in principal debt. Accepting any premium and receiving any additional cash does not, we did not violate any votes of the voters. We had additional cash that came in, so we will pay that back through a slightly higher interest rate.
Ms. Thompson, that should make you feel good.
No, it doesn't feel good because we are the taxpayers. It's not you. It's we, the taxpayer, which is you if you live here. But you explained this to me really good, and you know how I felt about it because when they went to the polls, they saw the number 150, and that's all they saw. And I just, I, that, it's just, this is my personal issue, and I, and I'm sorry. And that's just it.
Well, and I will, I will address that when we sold the initial bonds back in 2021, after that, you know, the board was very clear, 150 dollars, 150 million in cash. If we had not had the mold issue, I don't believe that we would have issued any further bonds. Once we had the mold issue, the roofs and the HVAC, uh, issues were found through the evaluations and things, then it was, well, how do we pay for it? We already had those funds authorized. The expenses were covered through the Davenport models from the dedicated property tax increase, the dedicated sales tax that we received. So the debt was covered with revenues that were already coming into the county.
I get it.
Part of the way the debt was covered at the lower, at the lower rate too was because of our solid bond rating.
That's all great. I'm just talking about me, just me, my personal issues. I mean, this one right here understands all this. I don't. I just know, I said I'm not going over 150, and I found out I did. And that's, that's, for me, it's very wrong, and that's all I can say.
Ms. Evans, wasn't the ACC also included in that, uh, package of plus 150 million dollars?
It was. Um, so ACC was authorized at 39.6 million. And I don't have those figures.
Oh, you don't have to have those figures. I was just trying to get.
But it was 39.6, but I think we've got about roughly 3.8 million that we have not issued for ACC at this time.
So in essence, the total bond was 189.6. You know, it has been a while.
But you're not just paying that back. You're paying back that extra.
Well, actually, Ms. Thompson, what we did.
You said it ain't free, because I'm going to cling on to everything you say, because I know I trust you.
But that's why it was so important, and I made a comment about, I was disappointed in ACC for not being ready with their projects because we hit the bond market at possibly the lowest in history. And I wanted, we, 1.43%, folks. And if you look at what we just got before, it's over three. So it's almost a double interest payment, and that's why I was a little upset. But because the interest rate I knew was so low. And that's why we're able to be able to fund this through the Davenport model because of that rate was so low. Because if you look at the 150 million dollars, well, 140, with the interest rate of what we just got, put that into Davenport model and see what that would have done to you. That'd have blown your socks off.
I just want to get back on track and talk about.
I'm sorry. Are you a commissioner?
I just want to, I just want to get back on track.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm here to listen to the budget.
Well, we appreciate that. I'm not going to argue with you because we've had this before. You are out of line. You do this every time, and I'm not, I don't want to hear it because I would never, ever do this to you. Don't gavel me, John, because he's really inappropriate doing this, talking to us like this, like he just can't. I think it's rude.
My position is to call him down, and I'm doing so. Thank you. All right.
We don't.
So returning to, uh, ABSS current expense, yes. Do we have consensus to look at an increase for ABSS current expense? Is there interest in that?
These don't have to be the only alternatives. These are just reflecting what we heard at your last work session.
All right, let's move on.
So any of this is a no?
Wait a minute.
So I, I think that's the question that we're asking at this moment, is that we, as Heidi said, we have a few different options.
I have to address.
I've heard zero motions.
Correct.
I'd like to. We just got a question.
I'd like to hear from Dr. Harrison when I asked a question at the last meeting. I think you might be prepared.
Yeah.
Dr. Harrison, would you like to, uh, come to the podium? I have a question for you. Talk generally at the last meeting about, if, if you assume that there's no increase to the manager's recommended, which means that the ABSS budget is flat year over year, what generally, what, what does that mean in terms of services that ABSS provides?
It, it would mean people. And I, I beg your pardon. It would mean people. We'd have to cut people. I, I think, um, 90% of our budget is, is people. We've cut an awful lot of people already, cut positions. We hadn't cut any people. We went through that last time I was up here. If we were to make, move forward, it would be actual people sitting in jobs. I'm always reluctant to stand up and talk about particular positions because that results in anxiety, additional anxiety. And as I said last week, like we, I guess it was earlier in the week, we've, I've caused enough frustration and anxiety already. I could stand up here and tell you, we're going to cut, um, cultural arts program and wouldn't even need any Kool-Aid. People would come flying out. I'm not going to cut cultural arts program. I could say, we're going to cut athletic programs, get people out here to see. I'm not going to do that. That's not what I'm, I'm all about. We've had that conversation before. But as I look at people, where we would go, I, I sent that PowerPoint presentation to, to look at a couple of things. The state gives us funds of, an SRO for every high school. $420,000, which doesn't cover every high school. We have SROs in, in all of our schools so we could, um, cut those locally funded SROs, which would save us $3 million. We, um, you talked, I think, Mr. Paisley, about the assistant principals. State gives us 22.5 assistant principals. We have 46. Uh, we could cut those 24 assistant principals and save us 1.8 million dollars.
Quick question. Look, we specifically funded SROs?
Yes.
So you're saying the funds that we have provided historically in the budget, you would use those for something else?
No, that wouldn't be, we would, that would be out of the budget. We're talking about cutting, I'm sorry, we're talking about if we don't get what we're requesting, what would I, what would I cut? And I would say I, possibly, I don't see me going there. But where could we come up with that money to, to make up that, uh, that debt? I don't, I don't know that, I don't know how the, that $3 million shows in, in the budget. I think it's just part of our current expense that we allocate $3 million to SROs. So it's not that the commissioners are funding SROs directly. It's part of that overall current expense budget.
But we put the, those funds in there for SROs.
That's correct.
And I would think that if we were to learn that they were going to be removed, we would then, this is, I'm one vote. We would then remove that from the, from the ABSS budget.
That's not the way current expense works, though.
Right.
Right? It's a lump sum. They choose to spend it where they.
You make all the decisions, sir. We don't have any decision-making over, over what would slide across the table to you.
I understand.
Zero.
And, and that's, I'm, I'm trying to respond to Commissioner Turner's question. Where would I, where would I go? If that were the, the outcome.
Dr. Harrison, school safety is a paramount concern for this board, and I think for yourself and the school board members, why would you cut SRAs?
I'm not saying I'm cutting SRAs. I'm, I'm trying to answer a question. I'm not saying I'm cutting SRAs. I'm, I'm trying to answer a question that if we're not funded, where can we go to make up that funding? Counselors. State funds fifty-two counselors, social workers and school nurses. We've already cut a, a number of those. We have a hundred. We can cut those positions and save three point six million dollars. We do have instructional support that we can use for some counselor money as well.
Excuse me again. Are you saying cut the difference between the fifty-two and the?
The, the fifty-two are paid for out of the state.
Right.
Fifty-four are paid for by the state. Two are federally funded and zero are locally funded, according to the documentation from public school, school stats.
That's twenty-one, twenty-two. The PowerPoint that I shared with you.
It's twenty-three, Terry, twenty-three.
Well, it's, um, we're paying, we get fifty-two counselors. We get fifty-two people in PRC program, reporting code O-six. Can be used for counselors, social workers and, um, school nurses. We have the equivalent of fifty-two people there. We get money for program code O-seven.
Let me slow you down. The state's saying fifty-six, you're saying fifty-two. Are there four vacancies?
What you have out of that report doesn't break it down by the codes that they allocate us money on. It simply reported how many of these particular positions do you have out of state funds or out of whatever code in, in state funds. So we have a hundred counselors, social workers and nurses. In the, the, um, the code that, code O-six, and now you may be lose the, the name of that particular code, but that covers those areas. We are, we have fifty-two people to, fifty-two positions. We also have code O-seven, which is the instructional support. In that area, we can also provide, we can use that money for counselors, social workers and nurses as well, plus psychologists. And we do use some of those. My, my attempt at which I'm failing here is to demonstrate where we have flexibility in our budget. And, you know, I, if, if I could digress a bit and address some comments that were made earlier and then maybe get back to, to some more specifics here, I'd appreciate that opportunity. Um, the utility bills. Ms. York has a spreadsheet, and I believe all of you have a spreadsheet with the actual monthly cost and, and what we've paid. So this is not a made up number. It's not an inflated number. Someone either in the county manager's office or a commissioner asked us about bringing all the bills as documentation. Mr. Hook sent one month, October, to illustrate what was all involved. That, that was not sent with the intent of saying multiply this by twelve and that's our request. Our request or our rationalization is on the, um, the spreadsheet that, that Ms. York has. So what you stated, Mr. Paisley, was misleading, inaccurate. Don't think that was your intent. But it was not our intent to say this October bill, some of our bills were sixty days, some of them are paid more. Uh, our intent was to show you what was involved to bring you hard copies of, of all those bills. It's not like what I get from the electric bill every month. We talked last time, and I think we're very willing to do this. Well, we don't have a choice. I shouldn't say we're willing to do this. We don't have a choice. But I think that's a good option to budget what's your budget. We, and I think, um, Mr. Baker and Mr. Hook have talked about a format, a spreadsheet, that we let you see our bills every single month and we could tell at what point we're getting close. And then we come back to you. Same thing with the conversation that Mr. Carter and I had regarding the, um, the, the supplements. We're having a hard time pinning down justification for that particular ask. That ask was based on three percent of what we paid in supplements last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Add three percent to that and that was our ask. And the conversation we had and how Winston-Salem came up. And we were thinking about how can we demonstrate that we're not inflating this and trying to make money on this line item. And that's when I brought the example that Winston-Salem years ago did not have a fund balance. And could we, and that, the contract had nothing to do with, with, um, utilities or anything else. But could we come up with some type of agreement that anything left over in that particular line item reverts back to the county?
Right.
I think that's, you know, good faith. Yeah. Mr. Paisley, I, I don't live in fantasy land. I know what I'm doing. You know, our, my son was raised on the great philosopher, Nick Chagre. You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometime, you get what you need. I'm trying. Not for what I want, but what, for what I need. If I come in here for what I want, you guys would run me out of town. I tried realistically to get what we need down. And as I told you the first time, and I don't want to go on and on about this. You're tired of hearing it. But we cut an awful lot of things that I didn't like cutting. And, and that will hurt us. And, and I understand how you guys feel about us because of history and, and whatever, you know. And I just, you know, I, I guess I'll go to my grave not being forgiven for being late on that budget. And that's my fault. We built our budget around board meeting on the fourteenth, delivered on the fifteenth. I had a death in the family and I flew out of town after that meeting. Otherwise, I would have hand-delivered that to Ms. York. We believe we emailed that, but as we subsequently found just last week, Ms. York, that we've had some email issues, that she wasn't getting all my emails. She'd get some of the emails. And, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's not what happened with that budget. So again, had I been here, I would have, I wouldn't have walked it over here. I would have driven over to the parking lot and walked it in here. That, that wasn't being reckless. That wasn't being careless. It was just a matter of circumstances that we, we couldn't control. The GovOps. I wasn't here when that initiated, was initiated. But I kind of smiled to myself because I spent four years in Raleigh and I'm familiar with those commissions and those committees and what they do. I understand what the, my understanding of what the intent of the GovOps investigation was to discern how we got into the condition we were. And possibly provide us some suggestions or solutions to get us out of that. To me, it was a joke because it epitomizes that we're from Raleigh here to help you. And I knew there were some issues when I reached out to Ms. Galey on May twentieth because we were working really, really hard on this budget. Not, it wasn't May twentieth, whatever it was, whatever it was. Because we were getting calls from the GovOps people for all this information that was taken up all our time. And it was information, that was public information that they could have put their hands on. But we're pulled away from our budget work to get that information from them. Senator Galey was kind enough to call them and delay it until after, I think she delayed it till May twentieth, which was, would have been a week after we got the, the budget in. So the first part was about the mold and we take seriously the, the, the liability that we have. But it said, may be liable, may be liable. But there are also provisions about state of emergency. And we were certainly in a state of emergency. And I looked at that, I read that, I saw how we responded. Had I been here, I would have responded the same way, as far as the, as far as the bids and so forth. The second part of that told us about an audit exception we had in our audit. That was public information in October. And I told the reporter, you probably, your, your publication probably reported on that back in October. So what we got from them was a joke. It would, and, and the, and the waste of money is the money that the state, and, and the context of that, and I don't know whether you saw TV or print media what I said, the context of that is with all the needs we have in this state, the state is funding that type of activity. It would be like me paying for a meteorologist to walk outside and tell me whether it's hot or not. So that's what they, I just, no mean to be disrespectful, but I guess it was. Those are probably good people that did that, probably related to some legislator. I don't know. The, um, and I understand your, um, your interest and your obligation in, in keeping the tax rate low. Mr. Paisley, I, I hear more from people to tell me what I want to hear than I do from people who tell me what I don't want to hear. So I always kind of keep that in mind, that it's never as good as I think it is because some people are not telling me what I need to, to know. But I do know, I talked with a, um, a young teacher the other day who lives in Graham. And she probably appreciates the, the low tax increase, tax, tax rate. And I met her, um, back in two thousand sixteen, when she was a teacher at Turntine. And she reminded me that she had babysat our children when I lived in Orange County and she was the, um, was a student at, at Orange High. And so I left here in two thousand eighteen, came back, um, in March and realized that we were, um, in the situation we were in dealing with the virtual school. We made some tough decisions about the virtual school. And one of the things we did with the virtual school was cut the Spanish position in half based on, on students. And I looked at that and saw the name of that teacher and I said, that's my, uh, former babysitter. And, but we only had enough students for a half teacher, so we offered her a halftime position in the virtual school, a halftime position at a, uh, at a brick and mortar school. Problem was, we had no halftime positions at brick and mortar school, so her option was to go to a brick and mortar school or teach halftime. She came to see me earlier in the week and said, was there any way that it could be worked out at the virtual school? As much as I wanted to say yes, I said no. And, and I asked her about what she had done since I, um, had last seen her. And, and she left Turntine to teach elsewhere because of the teacher supplement. And she came back to teach in the virtual school because she wanted to be in a virtual setting. And where she is now, that she told me that if I, and it's all very respectful. If I have to go back into brick and mortar, I'm gonna do it next door where I can make five percent more. So they leave for all kinds of reasons. We try to do exit interviews. We have the teacher working condition survey. We pay a lot of attention to that. I've sat down with a couple of principals last week that, uh, I don't like what that says. They know now, those who were here before, and I think those who weren't here with me before, understand how important it is to support our teachers. I know the number one reason that teachers leave the profession is because of lack of administrative support. It's not because of salary. But oftentimes, they jump from system to system because of salary. And, um, yeah, so I would not argue that many teachers leave us because of the lack of administrative support. It's something we're cognizant of. It's something that we work on and, uh, and work on that pretty hard. I think that's the extent of my preaching today.
Yeah, we thank you.
And did I come close to getting your response?
I got the gist. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to pull the PowerPoint back up or do you want to look at your spreadsheet?
I would recommend we start with a spreadsheet. And if you'll bear with me for an exercise, I'm wondering how each of you feel about an increase at all to ABSS? Not looking at amounts. Who is open to any sort of increase in current expense for ABSS for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Then we can work on that.
Yep, exactly.
I don't love this process, but yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to increase.
Okay.
What's the rate of inflation, Ms. Evans?
I believe it's three point three percent.
Okay. Just want to make sure we agree on the number, because I agree with three point three as well. So if we take their, last year's budget, and I think we just got through, going through those numbers, I heard forty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Correct.
That's correct. Well, you don't have to just, just multiply that number by three point three percent. And it gets you one, I believe it's like one point eight five five million dollars. But that increase, just the rate of inflation, does not even get you to the two point five five three utility. So, but if you add to the, and there's another factor here, the three point three, that will be added to the forty-eight point eight two seven. Gets you fifty-two million dollars, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So if you were to take the three point three percent, multiply it by fifty-two, that's where the eight five five number comes from. One eight five five, that's just the.
Say that again, please.
I'm just doing some math in my head, which makes it hurt, to be honest with you. So the alternative current expenses that we have here are completely unrealistic as far as an inflation rate. The only way that you would need the extra funds is if you had extra things to do with them. So I understand where Mr. Carter, uh, Mr. Turner is coming from about the expend, uh, the, the increase, but just wanted to put it in perspective. I wanted to put it in perspective of the inflation rate. Because don't forget, a few years ago, inflation rate was much higher than that, double that, more than double that.
Yeah.
So I just want to bring that to your attention when you're trying to determine what your increase to the school system would be. That's all.
At your three point nine, you're more than doubling the inflation rate.
Well, I put an inflation rate on it three and a half just to make math easy. So the numbers that I gave you in my head are probably.
Yeah, so it's, it's more than double inflation rate that we're giving them.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you add, that's nine point eight million dollars. And if you take the, make it easy for math, ten million dollars, you, you have something that's closer to a seventeen, eighteen percent handle.
Yeah.
Uh, which is completely unrealistic. So I just want to put that in perspective because I know there's some folks here that want to, um, increase it. So just take that in consideration when you pick your number that you want to increase. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I think, you know, we are obligated to pay the utility.
Absolutely.
Some, some, we've had to figure out a methodology in which we're gonna make sure that the utilities are covered.
I completely agree. But let's, let's look at what Mr. Paisley put out today. And I went through, when you, when I had, had the time, just to figure out. And see, I don't know, I don't know the numbers, but I know I'm pretty dead gum close. I don't know the numbers of these salaries, but I do hear a hundred and twenty-one positions locally funded. Now, if you just put, I mean, I think I would put like a forty thousand dollar salary on those hundred and twenty-one positions, it could give you close to like a five million dollar number. I mean, yeah, five million dollars. So the reason I'm even bringing that up, Commissioner Carter, is the numbers that we just walked through that we, we give ABSS fifty-two million dollars.
Right.
So if we pay eleven point six million in teacher supplement, or asking for one point four, that number has to be added to that teacher supplement number.
Right.
So that gives you like a sixteen million dollar number. Now, that sixteen million dollar number would have to be subtracted from the fifty-two number, right? Okay. You just get around, get me from it. That's, that's basically what you're, you're using local funds to pay.
Right.
Pay people. And Heidi read the statute that that's not what we're supposed to be doing. But we are. So if you just look at the seven, at the sixteen million dollar number, that's sixteen million dollars that. So, if you just look at the seven, at the $16 million number, that's $16 million that the Almanz County taxpayer is paying for some type of salary.
Right.
So, if I take the $16 million number and I divide it into 52 million, that only, I mean, subtract it from 52 million, that means I'm only allowing about 35 or 36 million dollars to maintain our schools, which Heidi has read, that's what we're obligated to. So, I'm with you on the utility bill, absolutely. I don't want to pay it, but I'm obligated and responsible for it, so I will write you a check for it. But I just want to put it in perspective.
Right.
Of, because we have 38 schools. I'll subtract the one for the virtual school, because I know it's not brick and mortar, but that's 37 million dollars. Just want to put that in perspective, that will, can you maintain and operate the school system for 36 million dollars? I mean, just look at the new, uh, Southeastern High School. I would tell you that, that, to maintain and operate that school is 1.3 million dollars a year. That's the whole ball of wax. So, when you look at it like that, I think if you didn't have, I didn't think if you weren't paying the local funded positions, you would have plenty of mo, actually, you'd have a number that's closer to that one, that you would have available to take care of these problems.
Yeah, and those 122, was it locally funded?
121.
121. Does that include our SROs? Does?
I, I don't know what, what I think about where they got their figures, but our, our SROs are locally funded.
For middle.
Other than 420,000 dollars worth.
But that would only be, what, 37?
We can include the SROs.
I don't know, but I know SROs, 37, at, um, I'm thinking one in each school. Okay, they get paid 60,000 a year, so.
Our, our contract is $75,000 per.
Thank you.
Covers car and everything, I think.
Yes, it does.
75K is for, you said, everything, salary and.
Car, uniform, everything.
Yeah. Do we, the county, pay every penny of that?
We do have, we do have in the school system, the way I understand.
Right, I'm clear about that.
I think it's half. I think we pay half and the school system pays half of the SRO.
Um, there's only.
Go ahead, go ahead Sandy, speak up. We don't mind, we don't mind at all.
There's only 13 or 15 county physicians, the rest of those are city municipalities.
That is true.
But the 75, 75,000 per officer supplements those salaries for those, um, Elio partners. I did not mean to interrupt your meeting.
No, 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 you're, it's all good.
Not a problem.
We've kind of loosened this process up.
Absolutely.
Except for Thomas. Thomas, that was supposed to be funny, he can smile laughing.
Is there interest in a utility increase for the schools?
I feel like I've been around the circle and come back and I don't know where I am, so.
Okay, how can we help?
Commissioner Lashley, would you like to propose an adjustment of an inflationary amount?
No, ma'am. I'm just putting things in perspective, because.
So, you, your recommendation then is to take the 48 from last year, leave it where it is, and let them figure out how to pay the utilities and all that?
No, we're adding 3.9.
That's capital, right?
Yeah, that's capital.
Capital, that's not, that's not operating funds.
Right.
And that's not coming out of our fund.
Uh, I, like I said, I would be okay in providing the money of 2.55 for the utilities, that's why I reached out to Rick Stevens to see what we can do there.
Right, I'd have the same conversation.
I, I believe, like you do, there, it, there has to be some type of guardrails. Uh, you can't just, like I said, like I told Dr. Harrison, and, and it's true, when I push the money across the table to the school system.
Right.
That's where I go, I don't have any say-so about it. I can't, all, the only way I could do is I could just wait till the audit comes out to see if they did that.
Exactly.
So, that's the only problem I have. That's the only issue that I have, is there has to be some guardrails for this because of, in the last audit, correct me if I'm wrong, the audit said that they couldn't find $2 million, not, couldn't find $2 million.
Overspent 2.3, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, when you have something like that, and it, it's just that you, I just have to have some guardrails, I have to have some assurance that what I'm pushing, pushing across the table is going to go forward.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, also, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean to, but I remember a couple of years ago, I think we did something similar with the SROs. We weren't sure if, if ABSS was going to have SROs in the second semester, so we put some money aside in a line item, and we said, "If, if you get SROs or hire SROs for the second semester, come back." That money was available, it was budgeted. I wonder if we could do the same thing with this and just budget it, leave it there, they need it after showing the actuals for, you know, for six months or whatever it is, they come back, it's there. If they don't need it, it's not there.
I was thinking that was for the sheriff's, for funding the SROs for the sheriff, am I wrong? I wasn't here at the time, so, but I think it was sheriff.
Those are, those are the county employees that was.
Right.
Is it different, is it categorically different?
It is, yes.
Burlington pays for Burlington Schools, Meban has, yeah, they all.
They get state money.
You can just put the money in a fund and say, "There it is," or in a, in a line item or in a, an account or something.
I don't believe that the statutes allow you to fund current expense in that way.
I don't think it can.
Please, if I'm wrong, happy to be corrected, but I think current expense is that you give them an amount and they have the flexibility to appropriate those funds as they need.
So, it's not appropriated to them yet, it's appropriated to the county, where the intent that they.
Right, you're not adding that to their current expense then. And the utility cost is a current expense.
3.5% for inflation of the 48,827,000 we ran at all is 1,708,000, actually 9,000. I think I could support that, that's the inflation rate, but I don't think I can support all this increased monies, given the history that we're enduring or living with today.
I have a quick question, are there any?
Yes.
Are there any comments about anything other than the school system left remaining? Are there anything, is there anything else about this budget other than the school system that we need to go over before Monday?
I haven't heard any questions raised from any commissioner other than what we discussed with the county workforce and with the ABSS.
I mean, Commissioner Turner, I'd love to give some more money to Parks and Recreation, but I don't have any money. I don't have any money to give them. I'd, I'd like to give them an extra, you know, 100,000 bucks, and the reason being is that's the department in this county that actually has over 1,000 people who actually donate their time. And if we didn't have those people doing that, Parks and Recs can do half of what they do. So, I'd like to, but just don't have any money.
What, what I'd like to suggest is, if this is the only remaining budget item, we don't have to decide this today, we know it's somewhere between zero and probably 6.8, that that's where this board likely will land. And I, I think we don't have to decide it, let's decide it on Monday and we'll make a decision, there'll be a vote, and that'll be it. That's my suggestion.
And we need to look at guardrails.
I don't know that we can find any. Yeah, I don't know if we can find any, I know Rick has made it so perfectly clear that, like you said, you know, current expense is a terrible monster.
I just want to make sure I'm not hearing that you don't think every school should have a safety measure, SRO, because with all the school shootings we've all lived through the last several years, I want to make sure that every commissioner knows the value of having law enforcement on site.
Amen.
I want to, SRO, I will pay good money for safety.
Okay, because, um, we've seen what happens when they don't, we've seen what happens in enforcement when they do. This, this world is, is so evil. And, and I just want to make sure that the big fight, like I said the other day, has always been about maintenance, it's always our go-to. And I just want to make sure both sides are holding both sides accountable, that we are never finding ourselves in this place again, because it's, it's just a real whip and stick that you can go back to and do it. It's, it's kind of like a bad divorce. We've got a bad marriage here and we had a bad divorce, and, um, we just can't, we just, we've got to get past this, because with all these expenses and everything, we talk about utilities and all that, you know, the, our schools make the world happen. I mean, if you don't have education, you don't have anything, that's what businesses come here for, they always ask about your educational system. And, um, and I just hope we can get to the point where we quit beating up the whoever and, and start right here to find what's going to work, because, um, all we're doing is going backwards, that's all we're doing is going backwards. And I don't know if some even care, because it's, um, it's gotten really personal. I hear it, and if you, you've got a set of ears, you can hear it too. Um, I just, I just want this to work, because, um, this is like, this is, this is not fair to any of us, the whole county, because, um, our school system is, needs to be a bright shining star, just like our parks, just like anything that brings positive to this county. And, um, I know how hard teachers work, and I know how hard leadership works, and I know how hard I want families to be able to count on this, because, um, it's a given, it's supposed to be. So, um, I'm just saying that.
Did we, have we decided that we can't set the funds aside in a county fund for them to come back and get, once they've exhausted their expenses for utilities?
Give me a turn.
Um, I, I have, I'm looking at a couple of different options right now, I'll be honest with you, I'm trying to research this on the fly as we're having this conversation. Uh, I do think it's possible to have funds set aside for what we think might be an overage that comes to us. I do think that's possible. I think what's not allowed is for us to intentionally underfund their utilities, because we know we're going to make it up later with funds we have set aside. I think it's very possible that that would be deemed to be not funding in, at all, but if we deem, if we fund an amount that we deem to be appropriate based on past usage and that appears to be appropriate based on their need, and then know we're going to supplement that later on with county funds, I think that's possible, but again, it's not something that I've seen done anywhere else before, so I'm trying to research this on the fly. I just remind the board that this budgeting process is supposed to happen once a year, they're supposed to get the allocation, so by, by setting it up in this way, it seems as though we are underfunding their operation, and I would hate for us to do that.
Well, when you do, when you look at the numbers they gave us for October, which is a 66-day cycle, if you take it and divide it by 66 and then multiply by 365, you come up with about 3.2 million dollars, we're looking at 2.5 million dollars for utilities in the first option. So, we're awfully close, I mean, we're $900,000 apart, but I mean, in, in the scheme of things, that's.
Well, every month won't be the same.
That's right.
Be nice if it would be. I pay mine estimated every month, same amount, but they don't do that for this.
But this is a high month.
Yeah.
So, if that was their highest month.
I was just going to ask if possibly Mr. Baker, county attorney, our attorney, Mr. Booth and I, we can get together sometime Monday to see what type of guardrails would be permissible. We want to be accountable, we'll put things in place that you can check on us and check off on us and make sure we're doing okay. Um, I'm, I'm hearing that some things might not be, but maybe we can kind of figure out some, some mechanisms we can put in place that can better assure you that we're spending money as we said we would, and that we have not overprojected intentionally. Again, like, the example I used was the, the teacher supplements, it's hard to pinpoint that. I think there's probably some things we can do with that, and I think the, the utilities thing is taken care of.
Let me respond to that, it is 4:06 now, so your day is largely over.
My day was over yesterday. That's what I do by myself, I told, I told staff when I come, Jenny's trying to get me to fire her, so she.
And our personnel, technically 5 o'clock is a bewitching hour as well. Is it possible that you and Mr. Baker and Mr. Stevens and your folks can have some recommendation by noon Monday? Our meeting is at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
John, would you agree?
We can look at bills and think of ideas and.
Absolutely, sure, yeah.
All right. I would request, and I know that all of us have had email issues, yeah, I'd.
It is fixed now, for the record.
Okay.
We are able to email each other, our IT has released every email that I did not receive.
Yeah, I could not open the school board's recommended budget.
They use Google Docs and we don't, and that has been problematic for us, that's a different issue.
Okay.
All right, so if I use Google, Google Chrome, I can open it? Is that, I'm asking a question that I don't, I have no clue.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a problem with that, too.
Yeah. We welcome your input, thank you.
So, the staff would need some direction in order to bring back a budget ordinance for adoption for Monday evening. Would you, are you suggesting that we wait until Monday noon-ish or Monday afternoon to get that direction, or are we not ready to adopt on Monday evening?
I think, I would really encourage us to pass a budget at our 6:30 meeting Monday at the latest. Uh, there's no time for a meeting in between, if we're.
I think that's why we're continuing to ask about numbers and if there's any sort of consensus in terms of funding for ABSS, is that.
I don't think there's consensus.
I would recommend you come back with your one current proposed budget as option one, and option two, possibly, if we can include some number like the 1.7 billion for utilities in addition to your current budget, uh, would be option one and two. Don't come back with an option three, please.
So, any increase, as we've said, would increase the tax rate, and you would like me to have an ordinance that shows an increase to support a 1.7 million increase in utilities?
No, I don't want an increase at all, but I particularly do not want an increase above 1.8% for a total of 45 cents per 100. You ask, you're asking my opinion, that's it. So, I would hope that would be an option.
That is a different option that has not been proposed for discussion, so.
I just, I think you just, you just misspoke, that's all.
Oh.
Because I thought you were looking at 1.7 million, he said 1%, 1.7%.
He said 1.8, he said 1.8 pennies.
We don't have, right.
1.8 pennies.
So, that's got to decrease by half a million.
Not a percent.
Okay, I think that is.
It was 1% on this one.
I think that is a new proposal that we have not discussed. Are you wanting to make that proposal for discussion?
I would love to have that as a possibility. 45 pennies per 100, uh, is not going to kill taxpayers, it's going to hurt a number of people, but, and it's not going to make anybody happy, except for possibly people are going to receive part of the gravy. But I think it's something that I can support.
Mr. Chairman, so I can hear that you're saying that what Dr. Harrison and his team and our team work on Monday, whatever they come up with in the needed utility expense for the county, for the school system, which we have to pay, you want us to have our county manager subtract that from what she's already prepared, plus an additional 2/10 of a cent to bring a net budget at 1.8 pennies increase?
That's not what I said.
That wasn't what you said, because you said you wanted 1.8 cent increase alone.
I want a 1.8 cent per 100 increase as a maximum.
Right, which means she's got to take whatever we come up with for utilities out of the rest of the manager's budget.
Right, there's no reason to add anything for utilities, in fact, we would be decreasing the manager's proposed budget by.
585,000.
Give me that number again.
Uh, 585,000. Five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen.
Yeah, that's roughly the number I came up with.
And the added...
And I think you take that from the non-field teacher position supplement, so it nets out as a zero.
With all due respect, I think I need to see if there's consensus of the board for that direction.
I don't see how we can get there.
Yeah, because there are five of us. There are five of us.
Right.
John, I don't see how you can, can add utilities into this. Cut us to one-point-eight percent and tell the county manager, after all the cuts she's put in there, that she's going to have to take another potential two-and-a-half million dollars out of her budget to get to that one-point-eight percent decrease, a one-point-eight cent decrease, uh, tax rate.
I don't think that five-point-seven billion, which is basically Mr. Hook's number per month for utilities, is an accurate number.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Over sixty days.
Right. I don't think that's an accurate number. I think Mr. Lashley said three-point-five inflation rate. That is one-point-seven billion. It will have all kinds of numbers floating around, but you, you made the mistake of asking me what I wanted.
I wanted some clarity on what the board wanted me to bring back for Monday. We are slated to adopt. We need a budget ordinance that reflects the direction that the board would like to move for an adopted budget.
I would like to know, are there any pots of money anywhere in Alamance County that you could cover the six-point-eight million? That's what I want to know. And if it's a no, that's fine. But I just want to know if you can find it.
There are no pots of money that I could fund a current expense allocation of that magnitude.
Just wanted it on the record.
Are you saying you want to take the one-point...
Maybe we need a break.
Should we, we have three scenarios. Do you want to take a break and then come back and revisit the three scenarios?
Well, there's five of us, so we can all just... It's not just one thing.
Greg, did you, did you want to take a break for a bit?
I want to take a long break. I want to take a break.
Yeah, I understand.
Do we have...
But I just want to make sure that...
Not adjourn, recess.
I know you, I know your job is very difficult.
You're moving to adjourn, and I'm moving for a recess.
But can I...
I mean, as long as we have this document here, I think we could...
We haven't given a...
Wait a second. If, if we adjourn the meeting, then we're going to need to be able to notice another meeting on Monday before the meeting Monday night, if we want to meet before Monday night.
I'm not suggesting.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Just want to...
We've got a long agenda Monday night, as it is.
It's not too bad.
We have a motion to adjourn. I, and I did make the circuit.
Hold on a second. I just, I just need to say something before this meeting's over.
Say it.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize to Dr. Harrison and Sandy Ellington Graves while you're here, because Ms. Thompson was right in what she said earlier. There was a comment made by myself that was made out of anger, frustration, agitation in general. And it sounded good, but it was nowhere close to what needed to be said. And I need to make an apology to the teachers of using the word Kool-Aid drinker. I knew that I had stepped out of bounds and got over my skis, I like to say, when I heard Dr. Harrison's comment. And I also heard from friends that I have that are teachers asking me why. And then when you get a text from your sister at midnight asking you, what are you thinking about? Why did you say that? I realize that I did something wrong, and Ms. Thompson is correct. It's not helpful. It did not help the process here. And that I apologize to for you as well.
Appreciate that.
And I promise that going forward, that you won't have to deal with that anymore. Not, one, I'm not going to be here in five minutes.
Neither do you, mine.
But, but two, I just want, I just want all my friends and, and relatives, actually, that are teachers, that, you know, that was a flippant comment, and I don't always get it right. And my apologies to you.
Thank you.
Bill, sometimes what comes out of our heads, comes out of our mouth, hasn't been cycled fully through our heads, so we're all guilty.
Well, I'm having a problem re, actually gaining, gaining, like, you know, mental capacity. And after, like Ms. Thompson said, you're right. Facebook blew up. I had friends texting me at dinner and at my niece's ballgame last night, and I don't, I don't do Facebook. I have a Facebook page, but I couldn't tell you even how to get into that kind of thing. So I realized, like, oh, man, Dr. Harrison was right. Probably should have backed off on that. But I just have a hard time recollecting things. And going through that, that stress, it's bad when you get a call from your doctor who tells you, you got to stop. We, you got to stop. You can't do this. And I understood what he was saying, because I stayed up late last night, researching this stuff, looking for an answer.
You and I were talking at nine-thirty and it's like that, or ten o'clock.
Yes, after ten o'clock.
Bill, that's, it's not helping for you.
I know.
After what you've just come out of.
Oh, I know. And that's what scares the H.G. double hockey sticks out of me.
Your sister's probably told you the same.
And I need to, to be cool, and you don't stir the pot when you're not, I'm not anywhere close to four-thirty mentality. And I should have stayed away, and actually, I should have just not, not said anything. And I hope you'll accept my apology. I'm good.
Any other comments?
We still need to give them some direction before we go into, if we're trying to go into a meeting Monday night, and they don't know where they're going to try and get us.
And we don't have the information.
Well, I was just going to...
You have to adopt a budget ordinance on Monday night, right? I'd need to have that in front of you to actually adopt something.
But couldn't we use the spreadsheet as a guidance? Like, take things out? Because I know on the right-hand side, I know on the right-hand side there is, man, that's the worst part.
It should be on your screen in front of you.
Oh, yes, right here. Thank you very much. I see that if we actually look at this spreadsheet, that we can actually put, you said you got the penny equivalent here. Can we populate that, that side?
If you...
On, on Monday night to see where, where we would be if we add, we take things away or we add things. I think that'd be very helpful.
We absolutely can. And if we were to go with that inflationary rate that Commissioner Paisley suggested of three-point-five percent, that would take us to a tax rate of point-four-five-nine. So that would be a two-point-six-five-two cent increase. So that would be, I believe, the recommended scenario two. Scenario three was a flat point-four-five cents. And then I believe I heard the scenario one was the manager's recommended budget. So those are the three that I've heard so far.
I see what you're saying. Thank you for, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Because I was...
Okay.
That's, that's it. That, that's the one with, with absolutely no increase.
More to anything else. We have an open motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. It's passed, so thank you.
Thank you for watching the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting. Commissioner meetings typically occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' Chambers at the County Office Building at one-twenty-four West Elm Street in Graham. The first Monday
meeting begins at nine-thirty A.M., and the third Monday meeting begins at six-thirty P.M. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamance-nc.com. The video of this meeting will be broadcast on Local Gov TV. Please go to www.localsgovtvnc.com for more information about their schedule and to see more videos produced by your local governments. You can also access this meeting through our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/AlamanceCountyNC or by clicking the YouTube link on the county website. Technical questions regarding this meeting's broadcast or production may be sent to our county webmaster at webmaster@alamance-nc.com. This address is for technical questions only. Comments and questions about the content of this meeting may be made to the commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the Alamance County website at www.alamance-nc.com. There you can click on the link that says County Commissioners to learn more about the commissioners, read minutes and agendas of Commissioner meetings, and find other information about the county commissioners. You can also send mail correspondence to County Commissioners, one-twenty-four West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina, two-seven-two-five-three. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting. Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on Local Gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments.